We'll call this meeting to order. Could we please stand? And if we could, uh, before we pay homage and tribute to our flag, if we could just maybe take a moment of silence in support, a prayer and thought for the people of Ukraine. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Okay, a work session tonight. First thing we have is the temporary use permit for the rugby event. And we've got some information from Peter Sorji from the soccer field. I don't, is he coming tonight?
No.
I guess. I would like to talk to Dave about it. I know you've been involved a little bit with that, Dave, right?
Yeah, we had a meeting. Is this on? Uh, uh, last week, uh, with other gentlemen from rugby. Um, was it you? Okay, you had the mask on, alright. Uh, and we were able to move the idea where the original plan was for the fields that I had a concern about, helped by the road too wet. Uh, and the arsenals actually were more than generous on moving an area that's gonna have, actually, I think you'll be able to fit it all into one section now. So I think it was a win-win for everybody. Um, arsenals will not be used in that area next year, except for just practicing. Uh, so I don't see any, we talked to Shane, he was out of town, he didn't go to that meeting, but he agreed that it should be a good event, right Shane? Um, parking is not an issue. Uh, they're gonna make sure that everything fits in the existing parking lots or will not be the road closed unless, you know, they sell forty thousand tickets or something. Um, but it should be a pretty good, easy event.
Is there any concern for, um, damage?
Like anything, there's always concern, but footprints can roll out easily. We have that three-ton roller afterward. Um, it's a good time of year being spring where even if there is a muddy mess, um, it should recover very quickly. I mean, obviously, anything you do there, there's always the risk of damage, but.
Do you think, Dave, that it might be a consideration to have some sort of a deposit or something as Joe said earlier? Uh, maybe for something like a hydro seed if we needed it?
Not a bad idea, uh, something refundable or something if we don't need, yeah. Yeah, I think, yeah, it's actually not a bad, we've never done that before, but maybe we should consider this for a lot of the things we do.
That time of year with a hydro seed, it would come back.
Instantly, yeah. You can roll it and then just shoot it and be done.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Good idea.
What is the new area, Dave, if it's not those spots along the road?
Okay, so looking at that map, it would be pretty much one and two, and then if you looked at the fields further in towards up, towards the woods. So they kinda re-situated, uh.
So they'd all be near the parking lot, the west side or east end parking lot?
There, there's enough room to do them widewise, uh, heading north and south. Whereas they didn't think there was, they thought they'd have to go east-west, but after meeting with Mark Jamarick at the arsenals, there was enough room to turn the rugby fields, so it actually made it more efficient and it got it away from that, uh, real wet fence line along the road. All I can say is Mark Jamarick's gonna be there with me when they come in to line it. Uh, we're gonna do it together, make sure everybody's on the same page. Uh, where they're doing it actually is a pretty good high and dry spot, I don't think, unless they get into the end zone a lot. I think in the end zone, you might have a muddy spot. We talked about, but pretty much most of the fields should be pretty darn good, so.
I, I do have some questions if, if they are gonna come up at some point, but, uh, the type of cleats that are using, cause typically it's, uh, it's rubber cleats or none at all with the, with the soccer.
Yeah.
And then, uh.
Just gotta hit the switch on there. Oh, it is. Okay, yeah, last time I didn't have it on. Um, so most of the guys wear, uh, molded soccer cleats. There are some, some of the guys in what they call in the forwards who wear, um, more aluminum type things, but they're, they're not like football cleats because there's no toe cleat, that's illegal. Usually four to six, uh, four cleats in the front, two in the back. And they're probably no more than half an inch. I forget, it's been a while since I've actually worn those kind of cleats, so I forget what the minimum, the maximum is, but there's a, there's specific rules around what kind of footwear you can use.
And then the, the next question I had is, uh, you guys have been playing in Buffalo Delaware Park for decades.
Uh, yeah, the club started in nineteen sixty-six at the University of Buffalo and late sixties, early seventies began playing at Delaware Park and been playing there ever since.
And, and who's in charge of, uh, a field maintenance, field repair at the, the Delaware, uh, park facility?
So the, the city takes care of mowing and in the last ten or so years have actually lined the field for us. We have a couple of guys who, uh, one guy in particular who, this is his baby, so he goes out and puts stakes in, makes sure, and he goes out when the guys are lining to make sure it's according to specifications. Um, but the city takes care of all the maintenance of it.
Okay, so if there's repairs that the city, uh, parks department takes care of then?
Yes, that's right, yes. So just one, one point, uh, when we met with Mark, uh, when I met with Mark, we're gonna try and get out there well before the event, uh, to sort of lay out where we wanna put these fields so that we all have an understanding of exactly where it is. And I'm gonna bring my, my man, my ma, my field guy out, he's, he's all ready going, I know where I can get stuff to make goalposts and he's really excited about it. So, uh, but that, that's, we're gonna do that before the end, you know, the end of April.
Yeah, when we were up there, the snow was still covering it, so, you know, it's hard for them to see, so I think it's a good idea that they come back end of March, early April sometime.
And then the last question, on the days of the tournament, um, I, I don't recall, is there gonna be soccer practice or, there's not gonna be soccer games, but soccer practice? And is there a concern that, um, you know, for, for years when I was involved with Arsenal, soccer balls just go past the goal onto the field, there might be, um, you know, we don't want any injuries with the rugby or anyone chasing a ball onto the rugby field.
Yeah, it's a good question, Jim. I, I actually didn't pay attention to Peter's emails. Did it mention in there if they still had a practice? I don't believe they were doing anything.
I thought he said there, there could, there could be practice, but I.
Yeah.
Okay.
When, um, when Chris had an early exchange with, I forget who it was, they said, we're not using it that weekend, that weekend's open. That's what that email said, that was a month or so ago.
I, I thought Peter's email said that if there was a practice that they would, uh, work around the rugby.
Yeah, and we're, we're gonna, uh, the way, if we get the, the fields that we want, we'll play a match at ten, one at twelve and one at two. So teams will probably show up around nine and we'll be out of there by four. And so there's probably a way to work around that.
Thank you.
And, and the idea of deposit, that doesn't bother you guys? If we do, we just wanna cover it because soccer pays, uh, Arsenal pays a lot to keep the fields.
I mean, I, Jeff's the president of the club, I, I think we'd be, we'd be willing to do that.
Yeah, that's, that's the number we were throwing around, so.
Yeah.
I think that could work. Excellent, thank you.
Great.
Yeah, I think that's a fair idea and the arsenals actually seem to be kinda excited to hear you were coming, so I said, I think everybody's for it.
Yeah, I, I have to say thank you very, very much. Um, I've been doing this for a long time and, uh, I had, I felt so good meeting with Dave and Mark when we, they were actually enthusiastic about us having it. And we've often run into less than enthusiasm from some, from other, other places, so really appreciate the opportunity. Thank you.
We'll see how it goes too.
Well, I have two nieces that play rugby and I'm excited that this is a, a men's and women's competition as well, so I think that's gonna be wonderful.
So are we all good with putting that on the agenda?
Yes.
Alright, then we'll go to the next item on the, um, work session, the New York State DOT Church Street Pover Bridge Project Approval Document. And in this document, they wanna give us eight hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars and, uh, seven hundred and seventy-one dollars to replace that bridge or up to that amount, correct?
Tough, Jim, that needs you as the supervisor's signature to be authorized, um, just to start the process. Um, it'll allow us to move forward with engineering and, uh, design. Um, this is just a formality, but good news is they signed their part, so that's the most important part. So the money's there, so I'd say sign it quick and grab it.
I suspect that's not a problem.
Do you have, uh, any idea on scheduling, Dave?
Yeah, it's a good question, Chuck. Originally, we were hoping to get into Church Street this year, but according to, we're kinda dictated now by this, uh, district engineer from the state that's listed, Chris Church. Uh, he does not wanna do it that way. He wants to put it out as a joint package, so one bid. So it's probably gonna be a one-year project for one contractor, both at once, so we're scheduling, we're figuring on a twenty-twenty-three season. So, you know, it's very unlikely anything will happen this year. It's just too much preparing, and as you know, East Fillmore, there's a lot of, uh, land issues they gotta deal with. The only part that we may start Church Street this year is if we get that Senate one-twenty-two grant that I keep telling you, we, we got from Senator Gallivan, we can use that money outside of the bridge to do stream work, and at that point, the town highway would do all that work. I think you all know we're still in limbo on that check, but if it comes about, that's kinda what we're looking at.
Okay, thanks.
Again, talking about these Fillmore, that's seven hundred and ninety-nine thousand, four hundred and sixty-one dollars. So we can put those on the agenda for me to sign?
Sounds good, Supervisor Bach. Uh, uh, Councilman Luke just, uh, texted and said, do we need to announce that he's on the meeting and give his address for this portion? Or just for the actual meeting?
I, does he have, what's his address?
One fifteen South Grove.
So, uh, Luke Wazinski is zooming tonight at one fifteen South Grove, East Aurora, New York. And I apologize for not mentioning it.
Uh, Jim, just one thing that got brought up, but I wanna make sure the board is up to speed on it. Uh, Chris Church did approve the use of Foid Albert for our engineering services, uh, based on the fact that they had bid out, uh, competitive bidding on the prior bridges. I know Martha was working on finding paperwork for all that, right Martha? Okay, so I don't know how that process goes, but they did approve.
Do we have to okay that or does the, the grant?
They have to okay who we're using. And it has to do with the procurement policy of who we use with professional services. So I guess my point is, is they've approved it, so it's more their blessing. So, uh, Foid Albert will have to send you a, a formal engineering proposal to vote on. But I wanted to let you know the state has approved that part, okay?
Okay, good news. Alright, we're going on to the next, uh, municipal solutions, and this is the general financial services agreement that we, um, have every year, I believe it's, uh, an annual, right Martha?
It's, it is annual. They have, um, changed it this year so that it's ongoing and anyone can cancel it at any time now.
Right. So did you hear that? It, it can be terminated at any time by either party within a, I think a thirty-day notice.
Is, is there an upfront fear or is this based on any bonding that they do during that period? I, I didn't see like a, a, a cost for this.
It's based on anything that they do during the period.
Thank you.
We haven't, I think the last bond we did was for this project, for the building. So any problem with that, uh, and their, um, filing the electronic municipal market access system they have to do every year. It's a full disclosure. You guys good with that for the agenda?
Yes.
Good, good. Now, okay, now we have the highway fuel pump software and so router purchase and a budget amendment. This is, uh, request to purchase additional equipment for the fuel pumps at the highway department, uh, for sec- security. Uh, Dave, do you wanna do?
Yeah, I didn't do a lot with this, but according to Nick, our IT guy, and Liz and Kathleen, it's almost foolish not to put this on there to ensure that I, you know, people are doing, you know, everything's accounted for properly. Just gonna make it a better, secure, so.
It's, uh, a cost of seventeen thousand, eight hundred and seven dollars and twelve cents.
Is that the router cost?
That's the cost of.
The whole package? Okay.
Yeah.
I think we pre-approved this already back in twenty-twenty-one.
The router is fifteen eighty-seven.
I'm sorry, the, yeah, the router is fifteen eights, uh, eight hundred, or one thousand five hundred and eighty-seven dollars and, um, that, that takes care of the software.
Yeah, the, the additional fee was a little over fifteen hundred bucks, right? And I think, uh, we approved the purchase back in twenty-twenty-one, but it just never got done because of the pandemic.
This is just an addition to for security purpose?
Just a recommended purchase when we looked into it. It's a good idea.
I'm gonna do one other item before we get into, um, the ERF stuff and, uh, which Dave just brought in. And, uh, we had okayed purchase of a Kenworth, uh, plow truck uh, back in two thousand and twenty-one uh, for the amount of two hundred and forty-seven thousand and twelve dollars. Um, Dave came to me this week and said it was supposed to be in two thousand and twenty-two, we don't even know if we're gonna get it in two thousand and twenty-three now, and then they, they actually canceled the order. So he had asked if we could, uh, he was able to find another truck, different kind, different brand, different body. Um, it's gonna be more money, two hundred and sixty-five thousand, five hundred and forty-three dollars. But they're going up as we breathe, um, and if you can get them, so.
Way to put it, um, basically, uh, Kenworth, the markets have changed so drastically that the factory has shut off medium-duty trucks, period. And they're only putting out over-the-road trucks because there's such a high demand for them. So they not only canceled our order, but they also said they can't even quote our order, like, and, uh, the best they could hope for is twenty-twenty-four now for a delivery. We did look into, uh, a dealership outside of Long, in Long Island to see if we could still get that model. And out of Long Island, the price jumped up to two hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars. So the prices are just every, I guess, three, three increases per week, you know, it's constant. I, the body that we'd selected, uh, that had gone up from a hundred and twenty-seven thousand up to a hundred and forty-eight. So what I did is I approached two different manufacturers, uh, Western Star Truck and Viking Plow Blades. Were able to put together a package where I can get a build date in September if I can lock it in right now, and these build dates, if you don't grab them, they're gone, so.
Contract with them that they're breaching or was it, how did that work? I thought that we had, we entered into a contract with them, they were supposed to provide that truck to us.
In their contract, Luke, if you look at the bottom, it says pricing is guaranteed through twenty-twenty-two. If the truck cannot be built in twenty-two, there may be a price increase, so I believe they did have a caveat there, an out. I, I don't think we really have much that we can do about this. It's just with the price of steel, I guess, is up two hundred and eighty-six percent since six months ago. So I can't.
Yeah, just wondering, is, is it that, you know, the price of steel changes, that's one situation, but I, I mean, how much of that risk is gonna be on them in the contract? If they, I don't know what it means that we, they can't do it in twenty-twenty-two, do they not wanna do it or are they, they, it's not economically feasible for them to do it?
They no longer are building that model, they're, they're switching their production over to more profitable equipment, uh, is what I'm being told. It is not possible to get that model till twenty-twenty-four. I think I guess we could wait till then, but I don't think that's a good idea.
So I'm just more concerned about, you know, the difference in the cost between what we had agreed back then and what we're gonna be paying for what we're gonna be getting? And whether or not there's any responsibility of the, our contact, contractual party to take care of the difference.
If you'd like to look into that, you can. Um, I will say the new model that I am quoting is a class eight truck, the old one is class seven. What that means is a bigger truck with a bigger motor. So if you look at apples to apples, it's actually not any more expensive than the other one, it's a more powerful truck. I'm afraid if we don't at least get moving, somehow we won't see a plow truck for a couple of years, so I, I guess whatever you'd like to do, Councilman, I mean, I.
How much time do we have on this, Dave? Would you say before they say that, you know, they're not gonna honor this agreement?
It's possible they could do that too. I mean, I, right now, it's so fluid that you know, this could never happen. Um, I talked to Jonathan, I told him I'd like to get a verbal at least tonight, and then by the next board meeting, can you hold our slot in the manufacturing for approval? So that'd be two weeks from now, he said he could. But again, you gotta remember.
Sure.
Well, just so you know, you know, and Luke too, I didn't just call Western Star, I talked to Mac, same thing, I can't get a Mac truck till twenty-twenty-four. Uh, there's just no such thing as trucks out there right now.
Yeah, I mean, I, I get it, just, you know, the reason we entered into the contract so we had a truck, now they're, you know, I don't know if they're in violation of the contract, but they're certainly not holding up their end of the contract unless there was an out clause in there that it could be looked into. It's just the reason that we signed the contract was so that we had a truck that we could depend on at that price. Now, we're gonna have to flip the bill for the difference and it's really not our fault. So I don't know, I mean, it may not be strategic to do that, there may be other reasons not to look into it, but um, I mean, the best interest of the town, we, we entered that contract because there was a price, we knew that there was going to be fluctuations, and now they're not holding up their end of the bargain, but the devil's in the details with that contract, I just.
Well, I could show our town attorney, I, I know you probably didn't have a copy of what we had in October, but these are the two statements at the bottom, it says, "Delivery at this time, no delivery dates are guaranteed. Every mayor effort will be made to have chassis built in twenty-twenty-two." At the time we ordered this last October, they were giving us a build date of this September, so that's why that was good. The final thing it says, chassis pricing. Pricing is guaranteed through twenty-two, but if the truck cannot be built in twenty-two, there may be a price increase, so whether that's a lawsuit or not, not an attorney, I mean, what, what does the town attorney think?
I'm hearing this for the first time tonight, so I'll have to take a look at the documents and give it some thought.
What, what was the price delta again? I know you said that, the cost of what we were committed to versus, I mean, I see this price, but what, what were you expecting to pay for a truck?
What was the original, two, two forty-seven?
Was it two forty-seven?
This is the contract that Luke's referred to, you can pass it around, that was our original source.
Thank you.
It's, it's two forty-seven, what is the new price of the truck?
Two sixty-five.
Well, it's not worth even investigating then, so.
Well, if you think two weeks, so it will still hold our spot, that's the commitment you received, is that right?
I don't, I mean, I don't think.
Verbal that we're probably going with it, I, I really want.
I, I don't, I don't think our legal costs, I mean, for that difference, I don't think we're gonna be able to make that up, even if it was a good case, so. I don't think we should pursue it if it's a difference of, what, fifteen thousand?
I gotta say, I don't see a better alternative, Luke. I, I, I mean, if, if this, unless this contract, you know, unless our town attorney says that this contract, uh, you know, is a valid contract, I mean, if there's those outs on it where they can get out, they simply won't build it and we won't get a truck for two years and you know it'll be thirty thousand dollars more than this. I, I think we should let our town attorney take a look at the contract and you guys take a look at the contract. And if that contract is null and void because they can't build the truck, this to me seems like the next best option. Especially if it's a bigger truck.
Right, and, and that's the thing I wanna stress too, is we were really fortunate, when we originally quoted these, I did quote with, uh, Western Star at that time too, and I, it was two grand less than what we got here now. They had a price increase too, but it wasn't as drastic. Now, the same thing happened with the Viking plow systems as far as the Henderson ones. Uh, Viking went up ten grand since that quote in October and Henderson went up twenty-eight grand. So it's not just really, it's not even just the Kenworth problem, they're all doing this. So if we don't get in line, everybody's fighting for these trucks. And my point is, is we're getting not, we're getting a better truck, we're paying a little bit more, but we're hopefully gonna, hopefully be able to get this one.
I agree with Councilman Snyder, we get in line while we're looking at, if we have any recourse based on our first contract.
I, I, my, my point again was that I, even if we do a recourse, that it, the difference is not enough to make up for looking into investigating into taking this any further. Fifteen thousand dollars, you're gonna, you're gonna blow through that and legal fees trying to pursue it, so it's not worth it. Not worth it, go with this quote, but we should look at the contract with this in mind and try to see if there's any subtle things we can do in there, if we have any uh, negotiation power here to be able to enter into a contract that is a little bit more of a contract than whatever this one is, the previous one.
I, I think even if you look at this new one, Luke, they always have these outs in there, if there's things with raw material surcharges, they get passed on to the town of Aurora. I think it's just really common in this industry that this happens, and, uh, and also too with the Freightliner quote, they do leave an out here where they would like a cancellation fee of twenty-five hundred dollars. If we did order it, we could cancel it. And just wanna make sure you're aware, if you, you, I don't know if you got the contract for the new one?
No, I don't have it. I mean, I, yes, I understand that there's a business standard, um, but in the old contract, it looks like it's not just passing on the cost of materials, they're totally, you know, they're, they're just terminating the contract.
I would ask that our town attorney take a look at that contract and, and make a decision in the next, you know, day or three or whatever your time allows is.
I, I believe that fleet maintenance will hold it two weeks. If we give them a verbal that we believe we're heading that direction, I, I just wanna tell you now, I'm not gonna be at the next board meeting, so I just wanna make sure you understand where I'm at before. So if this comes forward, then if you wanna move forward, that's where we're at, or if you wanna look into the Kenworth one, we can.
Okay, but I just wanna say, Luke, Luke said twelve thousand, um, it, it's eighteen thousand, five hundred is the difference. And, and the question I've had, have, um, just because we're looking at, I'm looking at it for the first time, and I know you had some, uh, contact with him, is the, the quote for two hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars and twelve cents, the total package, is a quote or a letter that's dated January twenty-seventh of this year, so it's, it's only four weeks ago. And you're saying they're changing, they've changed their line, they made a decision to change their line in four weeks?
Yeah, no, it's, it's, what happened is, is that's the original quote from October. Um, when we were, uh, in January, I didn't have a real good clean copy of it, so I asked the salesman to send me a, you know, the whole package just for my records. So that showed up January twenty-seventh, so it's just an updated from the October. But what's interesting, uh, Jim, is, is the salesman didn't know this happened, I actually had to talk to the vice president of Kenworth, and he's the one that flat out told me there, that he can't honor that price even because, uh, there's been three price increases, so effectively the order's canceled.
And you, you would know this and probably Chuck would know this better than me, but.
I, I was shocked, just so you know.
Yeah, I, I appreciate that, but can, i- is there any way you can go back and talk to him and say, you told us two hundred and forty-seven, I know you're getting, it sounds like a bigger, better truck, but two hundred and sixty-five thousand, five hundred and forty-three, is there anything better that they could do for us considering that we did have a contract, we were relying on it, and we did get a letter from their.
I think it's worth a call.
Okay, well, we did get a letter from them, January twenty-seventh.
It, it's worth a call, I just wanna point out when we looked into the Long Island Kenworth dealer, the price now is two hundred and eighty-six for this identical quote. So I could call their vice president and say, would you at least honor that price? But we may not get the truck till twenty-twenty-four then.
I, I do understand, I just didn't know what other conversations you could have. And again, I don't know how many trucks we buy over the course of a decade, but if you're buying multiple trucks, I, I don't know.
We buy a lot.
Jim, you, you bring up a good point too, is Dave has done an excellent job of, of spacing these trucks apart so that we don't end up buying two or three or five
Yeah.
at the same time.
Right, and, and I think, I, I, I hope I'm making that point, I think you did everything right, I think the, the board before me did everything right. They're the ones that are changing the rules, and is there any, any benefit we can get out of that? Uh, because we are kinda suffering through their price hike.
Yeah, I think the good news is, is Town Aurora is not desperate, we have very good equipment now. If it really came down to, and I talked to Supervisor Bach about this this morning, do we think the prices are gonna go back down? If we had a crystal ball and knew that, then could we wait?
We weren't a Microsoft forty years ago.
We, we could. No, so the good news is, Jim, we really are in the driver's seat as a board. We could try to hold Kenworth to this price or close. I, I think maybe it's possible. I didn't go that route yet, but if you'd like me to approach them, if, if it's a money issue. But I can't force them to build if their factory won't build it. That's my only problem, and that's what they're trying to tell me is, is that even if we did get you the order, you aren't gonna see the truck.
Yeah, and, and I guess if that's okay. Part of it is what I, is I'm asking your advice too, I'm not, uh, s- sitting here pretending that I know of the best way to negotiate with them, you've done it, you've done a great job with them. Um, I appreciate for business, money is money, uh, but it is for us as well, and, uh.
I wish I could say I was an expert, I've never seen anything like this, and, uh, we, we're seeing things that literally cold and bottom. Literally Colden bought out a Western Star and they canceled his truck and gave him a uh, a Freightliner instead. I mean, just crazy stuff going on out there right now because it used to be the salesman bugged us to buy from them, now we're begging the salesman to get their trucks. So it's just a real weird dynamic, I'm not an expert at it, I've never expected this. I think it's really a shame, we had a very good package planned and built. But apparently because of computer chips or whatever excuse they have, they're not gonna build that truck. And because of that, the prices are going up.
I understand that.
I don't know if there's really a great answer, uh, you know, should we just wait a year, we sound like we don't have other things to buy next year, I mean. But like Chuck says, I hesitate to do that, because if the prices are only even gonna go up further. And then we're kind of out of our rotation with how we've been ta- turning them over. But I can't stress, the good news is we're really not in a pickle like some, like what Seneca just bought six and paid three hundred thousand each for them. Because all theirs burned up in a fire and they paid premium for that, so we're at least in a good spot where we're not desperate. Um, I just need to know what, you know, and I talked to Jim about this, there's really no right answer on this, which one?
My opinion would be to go for it, okay, in my opinion, my experience of buying trucks. And what 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 I was seeing just in the towing business, we couldn't even buy a record last year. We went to a trade show and.
And that's what I'm afraid of.
They were selling the records, but you couldn't get a chassis to put them on.
What happens if next year the shortage is still here, now they're telling me now.
It's not gonna go away in a year, it's gonna take a little longer and then everyone's gonna be in line and. And you're, you said the one truck's got ninety nine thousand miles on it already. Over a hundred thousand, so. Uh, in my opinion, I think we're dancing with the devil here, I think we should go for it myself.
I think the two new vendors have given us very good quotes considering the market. I'm concerned if we don't pull the trigger, I'm concerned we may pay more.
And you had made the point, this is a better product too.
Oh, it's definitely.
It's not apples to apples.
Class eight truck is a, okay, so when we buy our class seven trucks, those are for the north end of town for the subdivisions, we were planning on this new one for up there. Up in the hills, we need a class A truck with a, it's got a twelve liter motor as opposed to a nine liter motor. So it's the difference between, you know, a Hemi or a three oh two, you know what I mean, so it it's not the same truck, we're just. Buying instead of a subdivision truck because of the opportunity, we're able to go with a big truck, follow me?
Yeah.
So that's why I said it's not true, apples to apples, and when you look at that price difference between those motors, Jim, you know the difference between a nine liter and a twelve liter. It's, you know, you're talking four or five grand, just that one little check on the.
And it's gonna last long.
Yeah, um, I agree with everything you said, Jim and uh, Luke. But it's just because of the uncertainty of the markets, I think my gut says let's get an order and before we don't get an order. But I don't mind either way, we have good equipment, we're not gonna be in trouble.
No, I mean, to be clear, I think we do have to go forward with the order, it's just uh, when we have a contract that's broken, it's at least a question to ask. Because that's why we enter into contracts, so that we understand the price we're buying something for. And the fact that they've broken it is not good for their future with us as well, I guess, um, you know, I mean, how can we depend on them as a partner when? This is happening as well, let's take a look at this contract to make sure if there's anything we can, that Bridget can do to try to make sure that this doesn't happen again, let's do it. Um, but for the difference of eighteen thousand, I don't think it's worth looking into the old one to to try to see if there's any, you know. Claim that we have against them for a contractual breach, just because the difference in the 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 prices, I mean, what are we gonna have for damages? Is the eighteen thousand if we're buying a different truck and they can still say that that's a better truck, so. Um, we can move forward, that wasn't really my point, but um, you know, in these types of situations, we wanna be thinking about what's in the best interest of the town. And uh, you know, obviously when a partner of ours breaks a contract or um. Rescinds a contract or whatever the situation might be, it's at least worth looking into.
Okay, so what what we're. If I'm hearing that properly, you want Bridget to take a look at the contracts first and then we'll make a decision at our next meeting, is that how?
If 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 the market requires that we enter into this so quickly, um, then let's give them the verbal that we'll do it with the new truck. But if there's anything that we can do in this new contract to avoid what's happening to us now by changing some of the language, if we do have the ability to negotiate with them on this. Then I would recommend that we do that, so we're not in the same situation a year from now.
And I think I'm saying the same thing, I'm not looking for a lawsuit, I'm looking to see if it's worthwhile to negotiate, especially if you, it it. Even with global warming, I expect it's gonna be snowing here for the next fifty years and we're already buying trucks, so I think there's a little bit of goodwill, especially with the. You know, the promises they made, that's all I'm saying.
That's disappointing, Jim.
You know.
Ice key.
Jim, I I'd welcome if you wanted to with me, call the VP and talk to him too, I mean, like I said, I I I appreciate, you know, you're looking to me. I don't have the answers on this, you know, I, it's something that I've never had happen before, you're right. You look at a company like Kenworth, we've been pretty faithful to buying a lot of their trucks for a few years now, it's amazing that they're willing to, you know. Do that, so, but if you wanted to call with me to see if there's something can be done, I I.
Yeah, for two weeks, I'd be happy to.
Okay.
Yeah, we can get together anytime this week and get a quick answer.
Just give them a call and just, you know, then you can hear it and then you can report back to the board what you found out from this dealer. And then in two weeks, you guys can either, you know, sign this contract or we can go in a different direction.
Thank you, Dave.
All right, next we got the ARPA funds, American Rescue uh, money that we have. And uh, we have, I think Chuck has a um.
No, it's just, I thought we would just talk about some ideas and and see where everybody's at and and maybe get a start on some things, maybe not. But um, you know, we do have kind of some things that we jotted down on a piece of paper and. I'll start it off by, you know, touchless, touchless faucets and. And the rest of our town buildings, which isn't a whole lot anymore, but uh, whatever we have left is, what are everybody's thoughts on touchless? Uh, faucets and faucets and fixtures and.
I mean, that makes sense, I don't know, I know you had sent out the original uh, sheet, I mean, what are, what's what's talk, touchless faucet's gonna cost us for the rest of our.
I I, you know what, Joe, I I can't tell you that, I thought if you would just, if everybody's in agreement, we can take it to the next step. And kind of put at least some budget numbers together or some ideas together, but uh, to be honest with you, I wasn't gonna get into all that if everybody said. Uh, you know what, I don't wanna do, I don't, I don't wanna do that, well.
That makes sense.
I understand that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, but if everybody feels that the touchless fixtures is a good idea. Um, I will proceed to see if I can put at least something together.
Yeah, I think just generally speaking, the ARPA funds are for a particular reason, they're for the health, self, safety, welfare of the community. And I think that fits right along what the, generally speaking, what the purpose is, is to get. Uh, a safer environment in the community and certainly in the, in the town hall, if we can get a touchless, uh, I think that goes along with that. Obviously, you wanna have maybe a more of a global plan, um, uh, if we do a piecemeal, maybe we do a piecemeal, but have a global plan. But I think that's right along with what I would suspect the funds are for.
We were able to get uh, all those through a different grant for the senior center. So that we don't have to use any of that money, that was through our um, CDBG grant, so that, did they start working on it yet or?
Not yet. Not yet.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, but again, if it if it promotes health, uh, healthy habits and. That's what I think some of the money was supposed to be used for, you know, outside. Um, entertainment, get people outside, it's another one, you know, so. Um, go ahead, I'm sorry, Chuck.
Councilman Wyszansky, any thoughts on that, you good with that?
Um, yeah, I thought, I wasn't prepared for that, this, I thought, you know, as we had spoken before, that we were gonna discuss sort of the global before we went into any piecemeal. Kind of decisions, I understand it's kind of a chicken and egg thing, but um, I I thought this conversation was gonna be where we wanna make our priorities. And then to start moving along that line, um, so I don't know, like, yeah, sure, it sounds like a good idea. I don't know where it fits into what we've been speaking about before, what the the board had spoke about last year to set those.
Well, uh, some of the things that we're gonna get into were, actually, some of them are done, but previously approved by the, by the. Previous board, so when we get out to that spot, I'll just bring those up if that's okay. I have to be honest, I can't, I'm having a little trouble understanding you, Luke, I'm not sure if I even answered your question, to tell you the truth.
There's a background, there's a, you guys, can you guys hear?
It's pretty good over here, it might be, you guys are closer to the speaker, I don't know.
That could be, but did that answer Luke's question?
He he was just saying, uh, he he, it was his understanding, I had to speak for Luke, but I didn't understand him, that we're gonna talk more big picture, you know, baseball diamond. Lacrosse, things like that, but if, obviously, I think we're all in agreement on touchless faucets.
Touch on the smaller things.
Sure, absolutely.
Everybody knows, so there's no surprises and and so on, I mean, I'll I'll hit the highlights.
Sounds good.
Quickly if you'd like.
Yep.
Um. The West Falls Library windows, I'm sure this has been on the, on the. Radar, back at the, on the radar for six years at least. It's that bull window on the back and plus the other windows that are in a two hour edit, but um, is that something that? Everybody feels comfortable, is at least taking to the next step and getting some numbers on it?
It makes, it's the first I've heard of it, but it makes sense to take a look at it.
They're in rough shape.
Are they?
Yeah.
Yeah, I got, I. Yeah, I, yeah, go through the list, I I, this is the first time I'm hearing some of these, it doesn't mean I'm opposed to it, I, you know, uh, West Falls Library is a great service. Uh, to West Falls and if they're old and they need repair, but um, yeah, I.
Okay.
I.
Okay, we'll put a hold on that for right now. Uh, the main street lighting is something that that we had on the, on the ticket here, uh, that will be happening shortly. That's an expense of about, about three thousand dollars plus or minus to the town on that, which will come out of the ARPA funds. But it's to update the lighting at the main street li- library to LED lights.
I do remember that from last year.
And Chuck, did you have numbers or a range on the West Falls Library?
Uh, without digging in too deep and just, this is just a, I I think that it's gonna be about twenty two thousand five hundred.
Oh, so these are big numbers then, that were, where, there's a pretty decent number, yeah.
Okay, I think.
Okay.
Uh, the pool boiler room, I know that's something we talked about and that piping and all of that, that's gonna be. Not a cheap item, that's for sure, but it's something that really needs to be.
And that's needed, that's a, in order to maintain our pool, we need to do the boiler.
Yes, yes, and that chemical room door, same thing, that thing was, if you've seen it there, it's literally with the acid that's in there, the steel is. Half of it's on the ground. Um. And this gets into some of the bigger things, they, are you good with all that, Luke?
I I think we, I mean, obviously, everything is going to be good, everything's going to be, yes, we need windows for West Falls, we need the boiler, we need this, we need that, but at some point, the money's gonna run out. And we wanna make sure that we've got the priorities set, right, so I I, in a general, you know, if we have money obviously left over for West Falls Library windows. Then after, you know, we take care of the pool, then that's a, that's a great project. I think we, we, as a board, wanna just establish as well, like where is our 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 priority number one, where is priority number two? Look at the costs and then make it down the list, because uh, yeah, I mean, we, every single project is great, and we wanna make sure that everybody's taken care of, um, but the money's gonna, you know.
All right, well, why don't you bring up what you'd like to bring up and discuss and we'll do that.
Uh, well, we have a total amount of what for the ARPA funds?
How much do you have in ARPA funds?
Uh, just under eight hundred thousand, right, Jim?
Just under eight hundred thousand?
Just under.
Right, so I I I think just like we did last year, we should bring up the full budget, right, and then estimates for each project. And then assign to each your priority, I think we, this is what we spoke about last week, but I I know I've spoken about it with Chuck and Joe, that's what I thought we would be doing here, so. If we have the the total amount and we look at the different projects that we can go into. Um, I think that the board is in agreement, if, I don't wanna put words in anybody's mouth, but based on emails and previous conversations, we all think that. Number one priority is making investments into our community pool, is that? I can't see his face, so I don't know if we're.
Yes, I'm nodding, but that doesn't help you.
Uh, number two, uh, and and I think is something that we've all discussed as well, is uh, doing some improvements to the baseball field and what. Sort of capacity that is would depend on the cost as to how that's gonna go. And Chuck, I know you've done a lot of work on that and we've got, you know, quite a bit to do, but I don't know what figures or I haven't, or which plan is the the latest, so we can. We can look into that, um, number three is lacrosse and over, um, uh, the new bathrooms over there in the field and maybe a brick wall. Um, we've got uh, the West Falls Fire Department and South Wales are two options as well, we've got the court is an option. And I, but I think all of these things are more of a priority three or priority four, so I I think it's a, obviously, a lot of uh. Putting some estimates together and things like that, but taking a look and trying to see, number one. What the board has as a priority, number two, so we're not overlapping with East Aurora, um, the village. To make sure that we're not doing anything that they're doing, um, and then, you know, number three, I think would be. Uh, trying to leverage those funds if we can, if that's a possibility. Um, as another part of this is that we do have things that we need to get done this year, and I think for that, you know, we we have to go quickly, obviously. Um, so what is the list of the things that we really think we need to do this year, and then the 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 other things, the sort of bigger projects that we're looking at more long term? Let's continue to look at those as a part of our sort of priority list, does that sort of make sense? I I thought that's where we all were.
So if I'm to understand you, Luke, um, do our priority. First, this doesn't all have to be done in one year, um, would we all agree that the community pool would be a priority?
Yes.
That's a pretty broad statement, but yeah.
Um, and when I say the community pool, um, there's, there's several things that. If you've gone down there, that really needs some attention, you know, back.
Yes.
I think back in two thousand fourteen, we started looking at the community pool and we were, we got a few grants from Galvin and we, we did the gun night and we. Every year we did a little something, but for fifty odd years, nothing has been done to that um, facility. Um, so it needs, it needs uh, some help, uh, the roofs need to be looked at. Um, the bathrooms are really need to be redone, we need to add a bathroom.
Yes.
Um, and dress it up and and, you know, to me that, not every community has a pool. We're very fortunate that we have a pool and let's keep it up, let's maintain it, let's make it look good. To me, that would be my, my priority to start with and get a price on it, see if it's something that we can do and what we wanna do. And then see what we got left over and then go from there.
Like, I agree, I agree prioritizing maintenance of our existing assets.
Yeah.
I think we all can agree, before we add on, and obviously, some things can be temp- contemporaneous. But the fact of the matter is, we have to save the pool and we have to keep that asset, and other things we'll be able to do will be great. But I I I agree with you on the hundred percent on the pool, and also i- if if the uh, West Falls Library needs these windows, you know. We don't wanna lose assets to neglect, and I think that would be our first priority.
So, and again, we don't have to do this all in this this year, it's, I think it's probably important, those two items that you mentioned, Joe, are very important. Um, it's very important if we're gonna do the pool to get started now. And I would imagine, um, the windows, they're in pretty bad shape. And that's a nice library and it's something that, you know, has been neglected over the years too, and nice to show a little love down there and. In in my opinion, and it's very needed, it's an existing asset.
Especially with the uh, road construction coming to West Falls, there's a real opportunity to sort of catch lightning out there. There's gonna be sidewalks, there's gonna be curb cuts, it's gonna be a more accessible village, you know, why would we let the library rot?
So I guess, yeah, what I'm trying to say is, instead of maybe focusing on everything at once, maybe we take those couple items. Get a price and get going on them and then still have discussions on. You know, what's left and what we can do and if we wanna do the pool thing, if it's too much, but I mean, I think it's something we really need to look at myself.
Yeah, if if I can add two cents, I I agree, I think prioritizing is important, but I, um, but but I think we can. Start that if we prioritize the the two things, at least the pool, the baseball, that, this area, but um, to. Again, not to speak for Chuck, but maybe to Chuck's point is, I think we should get together, we should put together a wish list and get some prices, because I, I hope. That a big project like the pool, a big project like the field, we might be able to get grants from outside of um, East Aurora. Uh, and if we, and not to count on it, but if we can do that, that might help uh, with some of the things that are on the the rest of our, our wish list.
The thing with a grant, you'd be lucky if it's two or three years. Once you start to make correct, Mark.
I.
The grant process.
I I don't, yeah, I I would like, uh, um, I I don't know that much about municipal grant writing, we've, we've been. Uh, successful at West Falls Center for years, getting grants from Ralph Wilson, from Oshai Foundation. And it it's certainly different than a municipality, absolutely, uh, and I I don't know exactly how it's done here. But but there, we've been able to get a turnover in in six months or less, um, and it it and. Um, and it it and I think in one of the uh emails that was sent out, Joe was saying that, you know, that. Ralph Wilson is is just uh. Spending a lot of money and part of it is that they have a twenty year. Uh, cap. And if they don't spend the money in twenty years, it's it's against uh the wishes of of Ralph. Uh, when he when he put this together.
Months on the pool and we might as well not do it this year.
Right, so I guess what I'm saying is if we can put numbers together for that and possibly get uh some grants even before that.
Maybe grants for other things, but I'm what I'm trying to push. I think I think you really need to jump on the pool and do it this year.
Then, yeah, then then maybe I can meet with Martha if she has time this week to figure out, uh, maybe seeing we can can get a grant. For that, I'm happy to work on that. I have to be a part of it. I'm happy to. Uh, you know, kind of spearhead that aspect of it. And if it doesn't work out, it doesn't work out, but I'm all for giving it a shot.
You guys think?
Uh. I I'm I'm fine with that. I I just, you know, when when you say, you know, the pool's a priority, well, what? What part of the pool is priority is is it is it the roofs, is it they? You know, the facelift on that, because it's just block, those buildings are just concrete block painted. Uh, is it? I mean, you wanna put uh hardy board siding on it and and make it look really nice, which uh tried to. Get a drawing to show you guys, but that didn't quite work out. But, you know, so when you say the pool.
Well, I would I would say that hardy board siding would might be swell, but it's not a first. It's boilers, it's piping, it's this door that's exposed. It's any roofing that's leaking. And I mean.
No roofing was leaking.
Okay, supervisor bucket mentioned something about the roof being in disrepair.
Has Fultonese come back with the their recommendations and we authorize money to uh have them come up with recommendations?
Oh, that's right. They're drawing up some some bathroom plans.
But it'd be good to see that and what they.
We've seen the bathroom.
Uh, yeah. Sketches, sketches.
And do they have any any dollar amounts attached to them?
No.
Okay.
No, I mean, I don't I don't think we're on the same page with that, but, you know, this this was a. At that time, this was, we were talking about uh adding, um. Essentially for, you know, two men's, two women's bathrooms or or a larger. With four fixtures. You know what I mean? Four toilets.
Yeah.
Uh, for it, but I don't know if. We're all in agreement that that we want to make it that big.
A- as a matter of prioritizing, if we had unlimited funds, I think. That would make sense, but I think that goes to what Luke was saying, what we've been saying, we need to, we have eight hundred thousand dollars. We're gonna start chewing it up pretty quick. With the dollar amounts we're throwing around. So if we can accommodate, if if we can share use of the existing bathrooms plus. Perhaps one additional external bathroom, we could save a lot of money to put towards other projects.
And then that gets into, okay, what do we want to make these look like? Uh, you know, if we if you want to stick with the block that the rest of it is, we can do that, or. If you want to put some nice siding on it and the whole thing up and really make it look quite frankly, pretty classy when you pull up that driveway. Uh, that could be done too, but we we need, we can work on some of those.
Yeah, the proof is in the pudding. I mean, are we talking five thousand dollar beautification or a twenty five thousand dollar beautification? It's, I think that makes a difference.
And I think as well that when when we're looking.
What's that?
You're way short, Joe.
Hey, I've been getting that all my life.
I think when we when we look as well as as to making these decisions, even though the pool, as we say, is first priority and it is time sensitive. If there's a decision between spending twenty five thousand on one aspect of the pool and having, I don't know. Four bathrooms or spending thirty thousand and having six bathrooms, that extra ten thousand is. Going to be dependent on what are the projects we have and what's going to be cut out of those projects by putting in those extra bathrooms. That's why I that's why I'm suggesting that approach, not saying that this urgent stuff that needs to get done is not going to get done, but if we take that. Like I said, approach into this entire use of the funds, it doesn't mean that uh anybody is saying no, or at least me. It's saying no to any of these urgent projects, but as we're making decisions as it goes along, that's gonna be an important part of the decision making um process, for me at least, because. Spending more money.
Oops, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off, Luke. You done?
Yep.
Here's how that went with the bathrooms, uh, you know, if you have two fixtures, let's just say. And you're hooking up all that plumbing and you're tying into the sanitary lines and you're doing all that, it really costs not much more to have four. And that's kind of kind of where that was, but I gotta say. Uh, uh, these bathrooms. Will be at least, at least. Double what you're talking sixty thousand dollars, at least.
Just redoing the bathrooms that exist.
No, 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 no.
Oh, you're saying adding bathrooms?
Build new ones, yeah. No, to redo the exist ones. Um, yeah. Well, to be honest with you, probably more like the twenty thousand.
Yeah. So like, yeah, I I think we're all basically in agreement, which is just a matter of prioritizing. I think we're all in favor of. Keeping the pool. I don't, I I think beautification comes down the line a little bit in terms of priority.
It's 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 just like remodeling your house, you know, where do you stop? When you when you start on it, you put these two new bathrooms in over here. And let's make them nice and you make, you know, you put some nice siding. I say hardy board, it's just just one thing, but then you look at that. Block, which isn't so pretty and you say, well, you know, geez, we really should do something with that. It's the face of it. It. It always snowballs, you know.
There's an easy solution that you make the bad new bathrooms ugly too.
Well, I I mean, I. To to suggest maybe a way to move forward on this so that we're not, um, you know, we're all participating in the process. Maybe we. Have our wishlist and we assign it to individual council members to. Go out and try to get estimates to better understand the costs. Of each of those projects and we can put these puzzles together into what we think is gonna happen. Now, I know a lot of things are gonna change and and, you know, different. Different directions, but if we start with this, let's all throw stuff at the wall, see where we've got it. Next step, let's see what our priorities and let's assign, you know, Chuck, obviously, you've got pool that's coming to you because you've been doing it for, you know, a year now at least, right? Um, but, you know, there's other projects that we can look into is to, you know, someone else can take the lead and then we come together with more sort of. Clarity about the amounts of it, then we come back in and say, okay, well, where are we and how do we put this together? I think that's gonna get everybody back, you know, I think that's gonna be the best use of the funds because we'll take a hard look at. If we increase the money over here, we're gonna have to get rid of that. Well, what do we want to do? So that's what I would suggest we would do.
I'm more than fine handing the estimate. Job off to you, Luke.
By we, I meant uh Jim and Joe and Jim. I I we were clear about that. That's what we means, right? When I say we are gonna get an estimate, I meant Jim, Joe and Jim are gonna work to get estimates.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Right, good.
Okay, well, I can tell you, you're gonna have trouble getting very accurate estimates unless you have a drawing. Because that's where it all starts and, you know, you can't just, this guy's gonna go get an estimate and that guy's gonna go to an estimate and and nobody's gonna know what the estimate's based on and.
Well, we we can all work together. We can work together for the benefit of the town. You have experience with construction and drawings and and I'm sure can point us in the right direction to uh. Successfully complete our tasks.
We're halfway there with the AR.
Uh, we we have, yeah, we have with the bathrooms and and we have a nice little sketch of what the position might look like. Yeah.
Yeah, I've seen a few versions of that, so I don't know. Where it currently sits in terms of, but, yeah.
Didn't we just offer, didn't we just uh?
Yeah, yeah.
Spending funds for Fultonese for for further drawings, right? Wasn't that in January? Or am I?
For the bathroom, yes.
For the bathrooms, yeah.
Yeah, for the bathrooms and showers, yes. The one we just approved here, Luke, is that the one you're referring to?
Yeah, yeah.
Yep, that was that was for the existing bathrooms and the existing showers. So you understand that? You know what I mean, Luke? That that proposal was for them to put a bid spec uh some bid specs together, a bid package, if you will. To do the existing bathrooms and the existing showers.
Yep.
Okay.
So that's what they're doing now.
Yes.
That's what they're doing now. So we'll have a package together to put out to get a bid.
Yeah.
And give you a number and show you what it's gonna look.
Yeah, an idea what the new bathroom structural look like. Yeah, so before we start building new bathrooms, we'll see what they can do with those bathrooms. One problem might take care of the other. We'll see.
All right. So. Um. I think we need to continue this talk.
Yeah.
We can. You know, you have some ideas, you have some ideas, we we need to get them all together. But prioritize them, like you said, and say, okay, we're gonna tackle these this year and.
And I think we need some dollar, knowing that they won't be dead on accurate, but. Bring it plus or minus five thousand dollar value ideas of what we want to do, that can see where it fits into our budget and how much we have in our fundings. Funding.
So we'll, you'll continue to do. The work with the architect. To get the information as far as getting a try to get a bid on what. What we look at down there. I mean, there's other things that blacktop needs to be redone.
Yeah.
Dave, I mean that. Uh, have you been down there? Walked through it?
Yeah, yeah, there's there's a lot. I mean, that's depending. I mean, the tennis court potentially needs improvement. The EA baseball needs need safety improvements. It's just, there's a bunch.
And then it'd be nice to get that stuff going before they.
Absolutely. Why spend another season without, I mean, we're talking a couple backstops. And a safety fence and then the the. Dave, you and I had talked about just continuing the previous agreement on diamond dirt where they raise half and we pay half.
Yeah, not to, you know. Money this and all, but you're right, there's a couple things that I like the two softball backstops that were built. I think that's a safety issue if we don't move forward with that. Or if you won't be able to use them for softball, so. You know, you kind of need the board to decide. If you're okay with that. Um, that's something that has to be done by April.
That's kind of where, uh, you know what, I'll I'll put this list together of of the. Common things that I think and that way, everybody can see it. Uh, and and that way, everything that we do, large or small. Everybody knows about and everybody approves.
That's good. Can you give an, just what what are those backstops gonna run? You must know.
Well, yeah, the first one we quoted before we knew that she needed two was five grand, so. Ten grand, that's building it in house. It's a lot of, they're not expen- they're not cheap.
Yeah.
Um, and then the other thing like the pickleball courts that we started, we could just pulled off on them for now. We did purchase the stone through the AR. PA.
Yeah.
ARP fund, um, but we don't have to pave it right away, so. Again, you know, we got four years to think about all this.
I gotta say, I think we'd be silly not to pave it at this stage.
I I'm assuming we're past the expensive part.
Yeah, well, no, no, the the blacktop is probably most expensive, but.
Sealers actually and and the blacktop, yeah, no, this is the real cheap part. Um, the the paving.
Blacktop and oil and.
Yeah, there's a special sealer after the blacktop and then there's a couple coats of the the colored stuff, um. So, yeah, and I think I did good quotes for Chuck at one time for those. So, you know, everything adds up, um, but there's like nothing pressing that I know of besides I. A few loads of diamond dirt for really the only thing that like I would say is like has to be done kind of the spring is those two softball fields. Because they've already been opened up. So you either finish them or you don't let her play on it this year.
We also have a capital. Reserve fund for capital projects.
Who we do?
We we do.
Okay.
The town does, you know, that we. Uh, say that a certain amount of money should be spent in capital projects every year if if our. Fund balances at a certain.
Right.
Amount, I mean. You know, there's no reason why we couldn't use some of that, you know, uh. So. I mean, if it's a safety issue and we're gonna be. Wondering if we want to spend the airport money and let's just get it fixed.
Yeah, well, I mentioned it because I did submit to last agenda that's still been tabled, the diamond dirt quote. We really need to. Do a board action to at least be able to do it.
Yeah, but that was for. Quite a bit.
Well, that was up to that much, right? But it's still, it's over three grand, so you have to have the town board to approve. So, but yeah, everything else, like Chuck said, I think the biggest thing that I know of is that door over at the pool. The boilers antiquated, the bathrooms are in terrible shape. The roofs don't leak, but they're in really bad shape, so all the things Chuck mentioned, um, definitely the West Falls Library, those windows, we've been looking at them for. Probably even before you were there. They're really rough shape, so I think that you got some great priority things. Everything else, so literally, if you got four years to plan, there's a lot of stuff we could just. Kind of feel.
Chisel away at it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
You guys good with that then?
Yeah.
Moving in the direction, everybody, okay. Luke, you good?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. And we'll move on to our regular meeting. And the first thing on the agenda is a public hearing. For local law intro one dash two zero zero two. Um, and this is for a three month. Be an I zone moratorium. Um, this is a new local law because. The other. Uh, moratorium has uh will be expiring soon. And we are. Very close. I probably said that the last time, but um, things are evolving and changing. Uh, in the in the zoning laws fast faster than we can. Adapt to them uh with cannabis and um battery storage farms and. Solar and all this other stuff, so, um. Um. That's the premise for the for the extension and uh I will open the. Public hearing at seven thirty five, seven thirty five. If anyone wants to comment. On this, please come up. The mic is right there on the chair and give us your name and address. Nobody?
If there's anybody online, just sorry to interrupt there, Jim, to use the raise your hand feat feature or type in the chat. I don't see anything, Jim.
Okay. And we'll close the public hearing at seven thirty six. And, um. I would ask the board if. We want to vote on that tonight or wait till the next meeting? Um.
I would prefer waiting till the next meeting, then.
Wait.
I I had a question too, uh, and I I agree with with Chuck, maybe for a different reason though. Is that it becomes effective on the night or the date that we vote on it and if we're ext- no? That's what I thought it said in here.
Becomes effective when I file it.
Oh.
That's that's state law. It does say. That it becomes effect, no, effect immediately upon filing with the Office of the Secretary of State. Last, last thing for the effective date.
Oh, yeah. So either way, your point. Works. Last. I think the reason too for um waiting is to make sure that we have all our. Ducks in order. And we don't make any mistakes on it. So, I mean, it's not gonna matter. We still have the two weeks, so.
Okay.
The moratorium, the moratorium is still on until the end of March, right?
It ends it in end of this month, okay.
Well, the end of next month, tomorrow, March.
It ends March first.
No, uh, end of next month.
End of March.
Yeah, March twenty eighth.
Okay, thank you, Martha, for clarifying that, but yeah, I'm okay with moving it if we if we want to.
So we'll vote on it at the next meeting.
Sounds good.
Everyone's good with that? All right, next is approval of the minutes. For the February fourteenth, two thousand twenty two work session and meeting minutes. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Uh, motion by Joe, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Chuck, any discussion? On the favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed. And that is carried. Next, we have audience, and this is an opportunity for the audience to address. The board on any items that are on the agenda. If you wish to do so, please come up and give us your name and address. Nobody going once?
Online, same thing, the raise your hand feature or chat. Nope, no takers.
Okay. Unfinished business. We have the next farm special use permit for the rugby. Uh, event. Um. We decided, I think it was a thousand dollar deposit. So, um, I'll make a motion that we approve. The temporary use permit. For the Atlantic North Super Regional Rugby Rugby Festival. Um. And I believe it has the insurance and everything, Martha, right? I didn't bring my packet for that. Um. Uh, contingent upon a thousand dollar deposit for damage that is refundable.
I second that.
Second by Jim. Any discussion?
Are we not gonna charge a fee?
Um, there's a fee for.
That's a deposit. Yeah, so if there's no damage, they get the thousand back?
Right, well, it we usually charge a hundred, right? Didn't you say that, Chuck? It was usually a fee.
The application is.
Oh, you already paid the hundred dollars.
You pay the fee. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, this is just, this is just a re- retention in case there's any kind of damage that they. Yeah, this is just, this is just a re- retention in case there's any kind of damage that David has to fix.
The application does a two hundred per day event fee, fifteen dollar permit, twenty five dollar application, and then a two hundred dollar security deposit. All we're doing is. Increasing the security deposit to one thousand, right?
That is correct.
Yep. And.
Any other discussion?
And also.
I didn't hear that. I'm sorry.
That was the fee.
That's what, no, it says here you paid.
The two hundred is the fee. We're just asking for a thousand dollar deposit that is fully refundable, you know, there's.
But according, according to this paperwork, it says there's a security deposit of two hundred dollars paid.
Oh, both. You're right.
Yeah.
You already paid a two hundred dollars security deposit and a two hundred dollar.
Oh.
Fee.
So it'd be additional eight hundred dollars.
Okay, eight hundred. Sorry. I was just trying to get you for two hundred bucks. The fee is two hundred per day?
Per day, right?
Correct. They've got everything paid according to this. You want an additional eight hundred dollars.
Right. Yeah. Okay. Any other discussion?
No. And also, um, what about porta potties? No, no, anywhere you want. But I mean, are, are we thinking?
So you're going to supply a couple? Okay.
Two.
Two of them.
Four.
Oh, okay.
There you go. So you will, you will check with them. Okay.
Okay. Very good.
Sure.
Yeah. Any other discussion on?
No. I didn't hear that. What was the, what, what did we?
They, they're going to get their, you know, secure porta potties based on the size of the crowd.
Okay. Do we need to? Do we need to set the, what, what is the minimum and? At least two porta potties that we want to put in the permit?
They said they're going to bring at least two, maybe four.
Good. I would put at least two then in there, right?
I'm sorry. Yeah. He said, are you going to put at least two?
No, he, he said that he was gonna, just as Councilman McCann said, he's gonna bring in the number of porta potties recommended by the supplier. Whatever it is, if he says ten of them, you're bringing in ten, right? Okay?
We good, Luke?
I think just to protect ourselves, our, our, our motion is for no less than two porta potties, right?
Sure. There's no harm in adding that to the motion, right?
We can add that to the motion, yeah.
I'll second the amended motion.
Any other discussion? No? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed and that is carried. Next we have new business. And we have the New York State DOT Church Street Project Approval. We need a motion to authorize the supervisor to sign.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Chuck, do I have a second? Second. By Joe, any discussion? On favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, that's carried. And next we have the New York State DOT East Fillmore. Bridge project approval. Do I have a motion to authorize the supervisor to sign that?
I'll motion.
Motion by Jim, do I have a second? Second. Taken by Joe, any discussion? On favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed and it's carried. Next we have the municipal su- solutions, general financial services agreement. Uh, that we talked about in the work session. Do I have a motion for the?
Before we do that, I just have a quick question. The, the, the contract, uh, is a renewal, I guess, but is it a one year, two year? Contract, you know?
It used to be a one year. Now it's, it's terminated by any party. I think it's a thirty day, you know.
Right, but after the thirty days, is it in effect, uh, for, for throughout this calendar year and into twenty twenty-three or just?
它可以be terminated anytime.
Oh, after thirty days?
No. Yeah. It with a thirty day notice.
Oh, with a thirty day notice. I, I understand.
There's no.
Time limit on that.
Time limit on the contract.
Okay.
We can terminate, they can terminate.
I misunderstood. I thought you meant we could only terminate it up, up to the first thirty days and that there was a time. Okay. Thank you for clarifying, Jim.
Okay. Do I have a motion to authorize the supervisor to sign?
So moved.
Motion by Joe, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Chuck, any discussion? On favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, that's carried. And then we have the municipal solutions electronic municipal market access system. It recognizes. Securities, informations and, uh, sup- uh, repository to the, um. NRM S I R, which is their. I guess their, um, people that watch them, make sure they're doing their job properly. Uh, do I have a motion for the supervisor to sign that?
I'll move.
Motion by Jim, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Joe, any discussion? On favor?
Aye.
Opposed. And that is carried. Next we have the highway fuel pump, the router purchase. Um, at a cost of one thousand five hundred eighty-seven dollars. Um, this is from, is an Ecos Ed router from the Pump Doctor. And, um, do we have a motion to authorize that purchase?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Chuck, we have a second.
I'll second.
Second by Jim, any discussion? On the favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, carried. And then the budget amendment, um, the decreased budget, uh, the fund balance of A five nine nine by nineteen thousand. Three hundred ninety-four dollars and twelve cents and increase expense line A one six eight zero dot four oh one, the central data processing by nineteen thousand three hundred ninety-four dollars and twelve cents. Do I have a motion to approve the budget?
So moved.
I'll second.
By Joe, second by Chuck, any discussion? On favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, that is carried. Next we have F, which is the senior center donation. This is from Donna. Asking the town board to accept a donation of fifty dollars from Judith Martin. Uh, the money be placed in TA one thousand dot nine hundred account. Do I have a motion to accept?
I'll move.
Motion by Jim, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Like by Chuck, any discussion? On favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, that is carried. There's a lot of seconds and motions when there's one person missing, isn't there?
Yes.
I don't hear anything.
Exhausting.
Yeah. Luke's awful quiet.
Okay, gee.
I moved. Oh, sorry.
He woke up. This is a, another request for, to accept a donation. I love these, um, donation from the Qantas Club for five hundred dollars towards the Easter egg hunt at Warren Drive. Do we have a motion? To accept.
So moved.
Motion by Jim, do I have a second? Is that Joe? Was my Joe, do I have a second?
I'll say.
Thank you, my Chuck. Any discussion? On favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed and that is carried. I have H, and this is a request from our rec- director, Christmas Haven, to travel to the ICE SCA International Senior Cup. From March twenty-eighth until April second, East has several swimmers that have qualified for this meet in St. Petersburg, Florida. Chris's travel expenses will be covered by the East Aurora Swim Team's Booster Club. Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Chuck, a second.
Second.
Like by Joe, any discussion? On favor?
Aye.
Opposed and that is carried. And next we have the, uh, two thousand twenty-one year end budget transfers, and I'm not going to read them all unless you want me to. Uh, we just asked for a motion to approve the budget transfers as listed. This is something normal every year that we could clean up our books. Do I have a motion?
So make that motion.
Motion by Chuck.
I'll second.
Second by Joe, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed and that is carried. Communication and reports. We have the January two thousand twenty-two. Uh, Easter or Police Department and Supervisors Report. Uh, we also have a cop alliance member loyalty award. Um, it was over two thousand dollars. They didn't write it down, twenty-five hundred dollars, something like that, that we got back. Our comp, um, board for not only being a loyal customer, but for having a pretty clean slate. So. That's good. Next we have business from the board members and I will start with Joe.
Um, what did I have? I had something. Oh, I'm working on the social media policy. I found some great examples from the Association of Towns. Uh, the Malta in particular, I think hits the right note. So hopefully we'll have some forthcoming in the run by the, uh, town attorney first to bring to the board. And, uh, the same is true for, we discussed the potential of extending the ability to remotely. Join our meetings. I'm going to work on a resolution with that and also send that on to the, uh, town attorney for.
Actually, are you talking about having someone join in from out of state or something like that or just?
Yeah. So in, unless, unless I'm wrong, I don't believe we have adopted a policy outside of the emergency mandate issued by the governor.
Not, and I attended the AOT seminar this past, um, and they recommend a local law.
Okay.
Because you're overriding a state law.
Okay. Good to know. Then I will not do that. We will do that by local law, which I don't write.
Someone. We're filling your plate. Um, Jim?
Uh, I don't have new business that I can think of. I know that, uh, hopefully Luke will talk about it. There was Connor Snyder's here. There was, uh, West Falls Advisory Committee meeting on Monday. Uh, I was out of town in our nation's capital. Thank you.
Oh.
And, uh. Uh, so I, I missed it, but I heard there was, uh, over sixty people at the meeting, uh, so I'm hoping Luke can speak on this and, uh. You know, Connor wants to as well, but I, I'm sorry I missed it. I look forward to the next one in April. And, uh, I thank you, Connor. I appreciate you putting that together. I think it's worthwhile, obviously very well attended, and I think there's going to be some really good things that come from that.
Nothing tonight.
Luke?
Uh, does Connor want to talk about the West Falls Committee?
I can, I can, we do staff reports. I can have.
Yeah. I'll let Connor do that. Not, not that I, you know, just so he can do that report. Uh, working on quite a bit of stuff here. The code red, eh, the village has, uh, supposedly. Agreed to move on with that. I say supposedly because I haven't seen anything official on that yet. So that's going to, in intermunicipal agreement. And, uh, also looking at, uh, I reached out to both Bridget and Martha about, uh, whether or not we need to competitive bid for those services, but however that comes out. Um, we would, it's the same concept that we would move forward with. Uh, question for the board next time will be, was that one year or a three year contract? With the cost saving, you have five percent for three, I think one year. So we try it out, but, uh, that'll be sort of part of the proposal next meeting. Uh, the other thing would be to, um, sort of coming from the West Falls. Uh, uh, committee meeting, uh, speaking with Jack Will Quinn from the Conservation Club, meeting with, uh, the supervisor and Deb Fed. Um, in a residence house to look at some of the issues facing, um, uh, the sort of. Infrastructure around the rails to trails that we do want to, every, every party there seems to, and residents that are there as well. Everyone seems to want to try to take a step forward with this rails, trails and come to some sort of. Uh, resolution, agreement, understanding as to how that it, it will move forward. Um, I guess, uh, you know, the most powerful is the Conservation Club. We just want to get this over with. Let's, let's do it. And so, uh, I started making a project timeline as to what we need to do as a, as a part of that. Uh, that would also include letters, uh, hopefully from the town board. If you approve the next meeting, if I get them done in time, um, to the residents on the trail, inviting them to come. At some future, I don't know, it doesn't have to be, doesn't have to be a public hearing officially, but so that we can hear those concerns and address them and try to act. Um, to make sure that they're taken care of. It's a little bit of a chicken and egg, as we all know, because, uh, rails, trails are not going to be funding unless there's a positive resolution. But a resolution is not white, black, and we can take care of those residents if we can figure those out. So those are kind of the two big projects I think that I've got over the next two weeks. Ready by, by the next meeting, along with the social media policy with Joe.
Okay. Thanks. Um.
Apologize, I've lost the ability to use my nose, so.
Okay. Um. Anything I have is, um, I'm on the, um, committee for the highway snow and ice removal contract with Erie County. And we've come to a, um, we negotiated a agreement. Um, we don't have it yet, but we've in, in verbally negotiated it with the highway superintendents and the, um. Supervisors with the county and it's a three year contract, uh, at an increase of five percent the first year. And then four percent for the following two years. So thirteen percent overall increase, which works out very well for the town. Yeah. So I'm glad that's done. We got it taken care of before, uh. Yep. Yep. So. That's all I have. Next we'll go to audience and this is an opportunity for anyone in the audience to address the board and any items whatsoever. And I think Tony is up first. Wow, what a surprise.
I, I don't know if this is something that's been covered before, twenty or thirty, three fifty Oakland. Um, Waste Management has a program called At Your Door for hazardous waste pickup and electronic TVs and that kind of thing. And I, I know it's been running for a couple of months now in some of the, the south town areas like Boston and whatnot. Um, I just was thinking it might be something we should be trying to figure out, you know, if it's.
We have.
Phase that we could sign up for. It sounded interesting. I know it wouldn't apply necessarily to the village, but at least the town outside the village already has a contract with Waste Management. So I, I didn't know if you guys had already.
We have looked at it and, um, the only, um. Problem with it, I guess, would be, and I'm talking with Dave is if we take that, we lose our, um. Um, grant, what is it? The? Yeah. Well, we get, there, there's. It was more than that, wasn't it? Um. It's the recycling grant.
Right.
Great.
Yeah, right.
Were you? Yeah.
Our recycling forest, it takes us out of eligibility for the, uh, recycled equipment grants that we've been successful with. So currently the town for at least seven years, we've done the electronics for the residents, uh, picked up at roadside. Uh, hazardous materials is a whole different animal. Um, I think that we could start, if the board wanted to consider that as like an in-house thing, the highway did too. It's something to consider, uh, but by having an outside contractor, by like Waste Management doing it, you're, you're buttoning yourself out for potential grant funding from the state to help.
Which is a lot of money. I mean, we've bought a lot of trucks with that.
My last one we just awarded was a hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars. Um, the past, boy, I think the one before that we got was like seven. We've done over a quarter million in the past, probably.
Wasn't that part of the grapple truck too, Dave?
Yeah, right. So all the recycling efforts we do, if we continue to do them in-house, it offers us opportunity. So it's a great idea, Tony. And I could see why a lot of the smaller towns, you know, they don't have the manpower that we do. But, uh, right now we currently do every type of recycling except for food and hazardous materials, which again, these are things I think the board is talking about potentially in the future doing. Um, but I think it's great you brought it up, but it just doesn't fit for us because we benefit too much from grants.
Sounds great. Okay. Thank you. It, it is a good program. Um, I, I, I don't know what they charge. It's, it's an additional charge per unit to a resident, but. Um, you just put your stuff out, uh. You call them.
It's a really easy program, good program for, like I said, a town that doesn't have the resources. Um, Golden, I think Collins doing that. Uh, you know, but for us, because we got the manpower to do it in-house, it, it actually pays for itself. So, but it's a great program.
Yep. Anybody else? Nobody? Okay. And then we'll go to staff reports and I'll start with Liz. Nothing tonight. Okay. Donna?
Okay, I have a few things. Um, one, I wanted to tell you how successful the primary practice done. We have a team, we form a board, and we're here. We have, every, every week, we're stepping up, every. We've been really successful. We've opened the entire community in the office for senior. Um, I know we probably the town hall and it's kind of great.
All right, um, do you want me to go through the farm market again? Well, anyway, the farm market truck will be here every week, and it's working well. We started in the morning here from ten thirty to eleven thirty, and then it travels to Chickewauga Senior Center, so that's been great. Um, the funding we're looking at is Erie County Senior Services. It's probably maybe the funds from the federal ARPA program. I'm not sure where the funding is coming from, but I'm hoping a new speaker system, which I've talked to Jim about, because ours is pretty antiquated, and you have to step over all the plugs and cords to use it, and when they use it for, um, some major events and things. So we're hoping for that. Um, we're also, there's, um, well, it's an innovative program they're looking at for IT to link some of the senior centers together. Right now, it's Chickewauga, Tosh Collins, which is in South Buffalo, and us. So we're kind of the guinea pigs for that. Um, Nick has been great. He came over and worked with them. Um, they loved him. They wanted to hire him in Erie County. He's so good. Uh, so they're gonna try to link our centers. So if there is a program, an instructor, a class, or something that we would like, it could zoom from Chickewauga to any of the centers. So little by little, we will work on that. So that, that funding is out there too. So we're, we're trying all the time to get free money. Um, but I like the idea, if, if some new tables and chairs, um, many years ago on the budget, we were able to purchase tables and chairs, uh, but that kind of went by the wayside. So we've done really well through the years, but I'm hoping that money is coming, so I think that's all I have. Thanks.
Thanks, Donna. I thought our microphones were in bad shape. You had lawyers hanging out and everything. All right, Brad, do you have anything? I don't know. Do you have anything? Can you use the mic, Brad?
Rod Cimion, ZBA, uh, for Chairman Ernst, who was not here. There were no petitions in January, February. I understand there are three in March. I don't know what they're about, but that's it.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Dave?
There, you reported to the board, but just for the public, the two things, uh, kudos to the West Falls Committee on working hard to get the DOT to fund West Falls, uh, reconstruction next year. The state let out four point one million dollars. Um, they notified me last week. So I, I just wanna encourage them. Um, now you got the door open, you definitely wanna make sure you keep pushing hard to make sure you get as much as you can included in that. Um, don't give up the fight. Um, you know, it's good news that the state's gonna actually do it, though. Uh, the other one was to, uh, uh, the guys did a great job helping the village with the ice jams last week. Um, that new excavator we bought, uh, was paramount for breaking those jams, so it went really well that part. Um, our, our infrastructure we put in worked actually excellent. Um, the one area where people questioned was at the nice again, there was some overflow that flooded the viaduct on Gerard. When we did design that, Mark asked and want that, wanted that left that way because, uh, he figured if it's gonna go over anywhere, that's the place to do it because there's no houses. So in case anybody wonders why it did overflow there, it was actually part of the design. Um, and all the work we did on Whaley, I know for the whole Gerard part from, uh, Whaley down normally got flooded, uh, they did not get flooded. So that part of our improvements, I, I know speaking for a ridge, as a ridge have resident, that whole neighborhood was protected well. Um, Gerard down at the other end, we did have a jam past, uh, North Grove that caused for some overflow, I think down, I don't know if it got to your house, Jim, or not, but I think the first couple houses had a couple overflow, but that didn't have anything to do with our project, so I'm just really happy to see we were tested with, uh, you know, the bridges we built in the past couple years and all the improvements, and it went really well. So, again, workers did a great job on that. Uh, last thing, I just found out tonight, uh, that windstorm last week, we had some pretty bad damage to the highway roof. I didn't realize how bad until this afternoon. Um, it looks like, uh, about five thousand dollars in damage to the skin of the metal roof, um, has been damaged. I'm gonna get Chuck over there hopefully tomorrow to help me with some expertise and, uh, show him it'll be an insurance claim. Um, so.
It's not leaking, is it, Dave? Or is it?
Yeah, but not to where it's a problem. It's, I, I, actually, we, we knew there was a hole in it, Chuck, um, but we didn't realize how much of the skin had lifted right up off of the roof and flopped back down. So there's actually four sections thirty-three foot long, because these are long pieces that have been damaged pretty bad, so it's a, it's a pretty good size repair. But nothing's at risk right now, but I think I'll probably be talking to Martha about insurance tomorrow and, uh, you know, probably a claim. You know, I just, I just found this out, as long as I got you, let the board know what's going on there.
Okay.
Tomorrow, tomorrow afternoon, Dave, okay? Sometime tomorrow afternoon?
Yeah, anytime. Yeah, I just figured, like I said, I just knew about it, and you'll understand. Something to do, the nails weren't long enough and, you know, so, okay.
Tony, you got anything more?
No.
Um, Connor, do you wanna come up and grab a mic and give us a report?
Yeah, as, uh, Jim alluded to and Luke, uh, we had, um, almost six, it might have been over sixty, I didn't, I didn't count, some people didn't sign in, but it was well over, over sixty uh, that attended our West Falls Advisory Committee meeting last Monday. We had a joint meeting with the Aurora Colden Fire District. Um, bulk of the meeting was on the proposed improvement project to the fire hall, getting community feedback on that. Uh, and to Dave's point, we also discussed the Route two forty improvement projects. A lot of, um, ideas were brought up, mentioned. Um, I also, before, um, people came, I sent out a survey to people so they could bring, and they could also fill it out there. I think I got over seventy-five responses, so I'm working on compiling it to put into the report, so it's easy to, to review, so we can pass it along to the DOT, so if there are issues uh, that can be addressed in this project, it's brought to their attention. Um, and, uh, we're still, um, it's an ongoing, uh, project here. We're trying to figure out our mission statement and get all that stuff finalized and, but a lot of good things, so, thanks.
Hey, Connor, uh, while we have you, I know you'd given, uh, the commissioners had given a presentation to this town board. Have you also approached, uh, Colden about, uh, their art funds?
We are going there next Thursday, I think March tenth is their board meeting, so, yeah, we're gonna go solicit their, uh, you know, their input too. Excellent, yeah.
And Connor, I have, uh, April eighteenth at, uh, seven o'clock at the fire hall is the next meeting, correct?
That is correct. The next West Falls Advisor Committee meeting is that, that date, and, um, that March fourteenth, that's two Mondays, is, uh, we're gonna have another, this is doing dual, dual roles here. The Aurora Colden Fire District is gonna have another, um, because there were some, um, we sent out a postcard now, we're gonna send out a postcard letting people know, uh, because there were some people expressed concern that, uh, you know, they didn't know about the meeting, so we're gonna, uh, inform all the residents of the fire district, so that they will have a second presentation on the improvement project.
And do you remember what time that is in two weeks?
Uh, yeah, it's seven o'clock at the fire hall in West Falls. Thank you.
Thanks, Connor. Anybody else say in this? All right, they have a motion to approve the abstract.
I'll make that motion.
By Chuck, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Joe, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. And that is carried, and at this time, I'm looking for a motion to go into executive session to discuss the employment status of a particular employee with no action being taken, uh, during the session. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Yeah, sorry. We can vote first. I was just gonna say that I'll turn off the camera, and we'll have a motion adjourned when we come back, but will, will there be any other business that we wanna keep online?
No.
Yes. Yeah, so if there is any, we'll come back on YouTube and back onto this link, but we don't.
Yes, to adjourn.
We're just gonna come back to adjourn. There will be no, no action taken.
Right, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna turn off the, the, the video then.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and it's carried. Thank you for coming tonight. Take a couple-minute break if anyone.
I think I'll just.
Uh, so eat now, right? Uh, I hope Susan has you a good steak dinner or something.
It wasn't steak, but it was good.
You do both these?
Okay, just wanted it.
Yeah. Yeah, good, good.